Good afternoon and welcome to the regular B and for size County Board of Commissioners. And I will try to turn off my mic. I'll say good afternoon again. Welcome to our June 19th Forsyth County Board of Commissioners meeting. I did want you to know that I'm not trying out for a role in Blues Brothers, but I actually had some eye surgery yesterday and I have been advised that I need to be wearing these instead of not wearing them. So I will keep them on for today. Citizens who are interested in participating in the public session portion of this meeting, you actually may do so by calling 336-422-1200 and you will be placed on hold until the public session begins. It's 336-422-1200. And any member of the audience who is wishing to participate in the public session portion of the meeting, you can fill out a speaker card and return it to our clerk. That does not apply to our public hearing that will come up shortly. We will begin our meeting with a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance led by Commissioner Wilson. If you're able, would you please stand? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item of the agenda is a public hearing on the zoning petition of Kernersville Little League Baseball from HBS to RS 40 zoning dock at 1659. I asked Chris Murphy, our Director of Planning, to give us a quick overview. This is actually our really part three of this. Are we good?
At least part two. Yes, this is a, we originally held the public hearing on this on June 5th and held the public hearing open. I won't go into a lot of the background. I will say again, it is a request to go from HBS Highway Business Special Use and with the use on the property that that is approved as rec services outdoor to RS 40 residential building, single family, 40,000 square feet of land, minimum lot size. Again, subject property shown in GMA five, it is right on the county line off Stigall Road, Sahibi Road, and then a little publicly dedicated but privately maintained street called Stunstall. This is a subject property highlighted in yellow. Again, HBS, you see the notification area there. Again, Stigall Road is here on the Guilford County line. This is Sahibi Drive and this is Stunstall. And that is where the, there has been a baseball field with parking and concessions and other things since the mid 1970s, formalized in 1987 by rezoning by the county commissioners. Subject property again outlined in yellow on the aerial wide image, on the county wide aerial imagery that again, you see an area that was used for baseball fields, some parking, and again, some, some buildings, concession stands, picnic pavilion, et cetera. There is no parcel specific land use recommendation as this is in the rural policy area. The Northeast Rural Policy Area Study generally recommends large lot residential development within the immediate, within the immediate area. As I did mention at the briefing on Monday, I did look and within about a three to four square mile area, you have predominantly, you know, there's some exceptions. You've got some IP zoning, you've got maybe an LIS, you've got this, you've got some manufactured home, but pretty much uniform RS 30, RS 40 and AG within a four mile, three to four square mile area. So what they're, what is being requested is consistent with what is already allowed by right within about a three or four square mile area. Taking a look at some site photos, this is looking west into the subject property from Stunstall Road. This is looking west into the subject property again from Sunstall Road, a little bit further in, you're probably standing in the parking area here, looking at one of the picnic pavilions. This is looking east back along Stunstall Road from the subject property, looking back towards Sahibi. And this is looking north from Sahibi Road onto Stunstall Road. At the June 5th hearing, there was a request to have the previously approved site plan from 1987 included with your materials. This is the plan that was approved. Again, it does show baseball field, parking area and the pavilions. There were some conditions of approval related to that, that would allow up to 81 hours a week of use, I believe from 10:00 AM to 10:30 PM, Monday through Saturday, and from 1:00 to, I believe, 7:00 on Sunday. These are those conditions of approval. And I did include the uses in RS 40. You have a number of uses that are allowed by right. You have some uses that require special use permit. But again, these uses are consistent with the uses of the existing subdivision zoned RS 40, in addition to the AG and RS 30 area, zoning area within that three to four square miles. The request is consistent with the general recommendations of both Legacy 2030 and the Northeast Rural Area Study. The request would resume the property to zoning district that is consistent with the surrounding zoning and land use pattern. The request will allow for the redevelopment of the site to compatible, single family and agricultural land uses. And the request returns the property to a zoning class, classification consistent with its pre 1987 rezoning to HBS. This was heard by the planning board at their May, May 8th, 2025 public hearing. There was one speaker in opposition. Following the public hearing, the planning board did vote unanimously to recommend approval of this to the commissioners. And with that, I'm glad to answer any questions. I went probably into a little more detail than I did intend to, but I did want to give you the full presentation just for, as a reminder. Again, I believe you, I believe we do have some representatives from the petitioner here today. With that, I'm ready to answer any questions.
Any questions for Chris? Thank you. All right. And we, as, as Mr. Murphy mentioned, we did have a public hearing on June the 5th on this particular request. I mean, it was continued until today. Speakers will have up to 15 minutes total to speak in favor of this request and up to 15 minutes total to speak in opposition. And I'd like to invite anyone wishing to speak in favor of the petition to come forward. Just tell us your name and address and go ahead.
Okay. My name is Nikki Rottweiler. My address is 7088 Avonberry Circle in Kernersville. I am the real estate agent that's representing Kernersville Little League in the sale of this property. The president of Kernersville Little League is running just a few minutes behind. He should be here in a few minutes. But as I talked with the Kernersville Little League Board this week, we had a big discussion on, we, we would just like the rights of everybody else around us, the same zoning. We're not trying to do anything different than everybody else. In actuality, they're trying to be good neighbors to the people around them because they want it to be the same zoning. Right now, as was stated, they could hold practices, baseball games all week long. That's a ton of traffic in there. So Kernersville Little League is just trying to do right by that neighborhood and asking for the same zoning as everybody around them.
You don't have to answer this question, but part of the issue, because it's really not a part of the zoning request. So you can say, don't have anything, don't have anything to say. But is there already an interested buyer in this property?
Yes. And I would, I would like to see what he plans to do if I can.
That would be welcomed.
Yes. One home. He wants to put one home that he wants to retire in on it. A single level home that he wants to retire in. And that's, that's his plan. But we're getting a perk test for one home.
Thank you. I appreciate you answering the question. You didn't have to answer. Thank you very much.
Any other?
All right. Any other questions for? Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak in favor of the petition? Would anyone like to speak in favor and like to speak in opposition to the petition? Yes, please come forward. Just give us your name and address again. Thank you.
My name is Chantel Mullin. My address is 9219 Sahabi Road, Kernersville, North Carolina. I've, this is my third time coming in, trying to speak about what's going on or what may be going on or what may not be going on. I think that's the real issue here is that we have things that are being said and things that look other ways. So there are other people here today from the neighborhood as well as I have a couple of letters here from other people in the neighborhood that could not make it due to working. And maybe I misunderstood the last meeting that we were here, but, and you could correct me if, if I'm wrong, but I was under the assumption that the zoning board was asked to present the site plan as it is for what's going to go in there, not the one from the ball field, which doesn't seem to be relevant at this point because we're not talking about the site of the ball field. We're talking about what's going in. And so I had also requested after the gentleman over here had said there was a site plan for this site, to see what that was. And I did request that through email multiple times and I was given the ball field site plan. So maybe I misunderstood what the, what the board's intention was with asking for the site plan that he said there was one. Maybe I misunderstood, but that's a question now that I have because I thought we were going to see what was actually going in there. There also seems to be some issues with communications that were going on between the Realtor and some of the people in the neighborhood. Some of them will speak to that and what specifically they were told and interactions. And then also, in the picture that was presented here, it's a clear picture of the real estate sign. However, when you go look at the ball field and other people have pictures of this at different dates and times, that sign is not, you can't see that sign at all. People will tell you what their experience was with that sign as well. I want to let them tell you so that you're not just listening to me. You can potentially listen to some other people's thoughts. Can I give the, okay, thank you.
All right. Others that would like to speak in opposition? Just tell us your name and address, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Michelle Davis. I live on Stunstall Road, roughly 400 to 500 feet from the ball fields. Please excuse me as I'm going to read a statement as a public speaking is not my forte. So I am here today not to oppose nor give approval for the rezoning on the Stunstall property. My stance today is ask for transparency and as much truthful information that could possibly be shared into regards of the rezoning of the Little League ball fields. From the moment the listing sign was posted at the ball fields, there have been very questionable actions on both the selling and buyer's behalf, including receiving vastly different information in regards to future plans. The day the for sale sign was posted, within hours it was under contract, which is very unusual, especially for a rural and hard to find areas such as ours. Furthermore, the listing sign was posted in a very discreet, hard to see location on the property turned sideways. No one was given any opportunity to inquire about the property or even told it was being sold. Being that there are multiple properties and residents near the ball field, it would have been nice if one of us or all of us could have at least had an opportunity to inquire or ask about the sale of the property. This immediately threw red flags and made several of my neighbors and I feel as this was a pre-planned or inside purchase. Additionally, when myself and my fellow neighbors reached out to the listing agent, we were all informed that an older gentleman entering retirement was purchasing the prop, purchasing the property to build his dream home. Great, I thought, someone respectful, quiet, and we won't have to worry about the area looking abandoned as it has in several years in the past. The ball fields have not been used in roughly two years and have only been mowed two times in those two years, once by myself. When the rezoning signs were posted on Stunstall, I of course did my own research, and that is when I found that the proposal is for seven lots, seven 40,000 square foot lots, not one lot, not one home. I also received a letter from the listing agent informing us of the possible businesses that could go on the property if the rezoning didn't happen. I of course do not want a business of any kind on our small, quiet and quaint neighborhood. As you can see by the map, it's a very small area. If you're unfamiliar with the area in the neighborhood in reference, I would like to give you an idea. We have tall, mature trees, well-maintained homes and maintained yards, full of deer, wildlife, wild turkey and birds of all species. The one-lane gravel road with beautiful views of a sunset consists of our neighborhood with respectful, quiet and helpful neighbors. We all help each other and many of our neighbors are elderly and have owned these homes for years, if not decades. I chose this area to live for all the reasons listed above, and this brings me to my next list of concerns, and they are as follows. The city county report on page two states the road or gravel lane is locally owned. I would like to know who exactly owns the road at this time, and if it is owned by Kernersville Little League, who will own the road after the sale? If the road is currently locally owned, once the property is rezoned and sold, will this road now become an NC dot responsibility? If NC dot took over road maintenance, would I now have a paved road or sidewalks? With the rezoning and proposal of seven lots, which is what is in the planning, there is only one way in and one way out of the neighborhood. I can only assume that the road would have to be widened to handle this substantial influx of traffic volume. How much of my property and my neighbors' properties are we going to lose with the widening of a road and possible sidewalks? I understand easements are in place for that, but could I possibly lose more than what the easement is currently marked in my property line? I also have several concerns in regards to acquiring new access in and out of the neighborhood. As you can see on the site map, Sahabi Road directly connects to Bethel Church, which is where the waterway is, that is Bethel Church Road. It would be extremely easy to extend Sahabi Road south, I believe that is, towards Bethel Church, as well as extend Stunstall Road through the back of the ball fields to also meet up with Bethel Church. Take the Macy Grove Road extension leading to Piney Grove Road, for example. Houses are now 20 feet or less from a highly trafficked road. This would substantially impact the character of our neighborhood, as well as negatively impact wildlife, cause noise pollution and would directly affect the safety of our neighborhood where there are frequent walkers, dogs and young kids riding bikes. This takes me to my next concern, which is a water source. We are all on private wells, but we use the same water source. Has the current water source been tested to ensure seven new homes possibly won't cause water issues in our water source, or worst case scenario, force the neighborhood to change to city water? Listed on page three of the county report states that the rezoning and area plans encourage rurally compatible design for residential development to minimize the impact of new developments on the community's rural and scenic characteristics. Seven new homes are not minimal to our small community. Seven new homes would directly impact all of us. Once again, in the site plans, not the site plans, I apologize, the planning, they use the words homes, plural. This again contradicts all the information that we have received. A letter was attached to the original planning by Ms. Rotwiler, and as you can read for yourselves, Ms. Rotwiler states several times, "The rezoning will be quote, significant benefit to residents on the street. Numerous types of businesses could have adverse effects such as traffic, noise and impact your small, quaint community, and encourage support as undoubtedly will approve quality of life in the neighborhood." My question to the planning board, Ms. Rotwiler, and the petitioner, is if this rezoning is passed and plans continue, who does this benefit? Because it most certainly does not benefit myself, my two neighbors, or our small neighborhood. I cannot see how multiple homes being built in our community would not cause more adverse effects such as traffic, noise, road extensions, years of construction and so forth. So whose quality of life are we referring to? Thank you for listening.
Thank you. We actually have about, just under four minutes. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in opposition? If there's a couple of you, let's see if we can do a couple of minutes apiece.
Hi, my name is Mary Fall. I live at 9245 Sahabi Road, Kernersville, North Carolina. I have seen this ball field in action from the beginning, and I've seen it turn into Little League. And it's not really been bad as Little League or too much prior to, but it got to be a problem at the beginning of it. But when Little League got it, it got better. I would like to see it rezoned, but I have the same concerns these other individuals have, because there's no transparency about what's going on here, or what the future for the site really is, because this gentleman here had made the comment that if it stayed in the districting that it is, that it could be a go-kart track, many numerous things, a park, all kinds of things. So yes, I have a concern, because it backs up within 500 feet to my property. And I appreciate your time, but I hope you'll consider all of my neighbors and all the individuals that are really concerned about what's going to be going on back on that property. And thank you for your time.
Reverend Joanne Lockard Hawkins, United Methodist Church of South Carolina, retired, 9229 Sahabi Road. This is not the first time in my career that I have been faced with people who I care about, people I oversee, but also impacts me in the middle of a discussion of what's going to happen with property around them. I've sat in meetings with the federal government on EPA sites that were having to be cleaned up, that backed up to a church. I have also sat in meetings for a company that bought out a little village that is a mill, that was Milltown in South Carolina, and when they bought that, they had plans. But the people of that town also were concerned about what that meant, about the livelihood that they had been born into, lived into and had worked. They wanted to keep a certain community of thought going in, and they didn't want to be ignored. And I believe this is the same issue we have here. You've heard all the other neighbors, and I have been part of those conversations with the realtors. I've been involved in investigating and trying to find out exactly what seven more houses on that dirt road means to the people that I live around and I care about. The problem is whoever owns the road doesn't maintain it. We who live on that, my house has a 9229 Sahabi Road, but our driveway is on that dirt road that belongs to the ballpark usage right now. And we have been taking care of it, we have been maintaining it, and the people who have been there before us have maintained it a whole lot longer. And I agree, I don't see how anything other than one house, one person is going to be able to not impact that section of that real estate, and then into the very, very small 1960 planned road, which is the main way in and out of that subdivision. We're not talking a brown new subdivision, we're talking about one that's been existence for a good many years, and the infrastructure is set up that way. Unfortunately, time is up. I thank you for your time. Please consider our concerns as we go forward. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I'd like to ask Chris Murphy if he'd like to, I mean, several of those questions I think are very easily answered, some may not be, but maybe you could just clarify a part of those, several of those?
I can. Of course, whenever we write a staff report, well, first of all, there is no plan. The plan that was mentioned to be brought back was the plan of record from 1987. There is no plan associated with this site today, because they are requesting a general use rezoning. And as such, whenever we write our staff report, we write our staff report based on what could happen. So in the staff report, whenever it references 6.89 acres and how many homes you could have on 6.89 acres, it would be seven homes. Again, this is a general use request, so there isn't anything specifically tying this to one home, two homes, three homes, seven homes, it's general use. So when we write our staff report, we write it based on what could go on the property. In relation to Stunstall being a local street and locally owned, it was shown on a 1965 plat as a offer for public dedication. So it is a public right of way, but it has never been maintained, because it never met, it was never improved to a point where NC DOT could maintain it, nor was it ever improved, I don't believe there were ever enough homes to meet the warrants for NC DOT taking that over. In the 1965 plat for Stunstall, the piece of property in question, the 6.89 acres was shown as 17 lots, but it was never, you know, a couple of homes, a couple of those lots were taken out for the folks that do live on Stunstall, but the balance of that on this plat, if my calculation was correct, would still be 13 additional lots that could have been on this road. Again, it's a general use request, so the information that may be being relayed by the real estate agent, you know, I have no reason to think that that's not correct. But again, the information in our staff report is related to how the property could, could be developed.
Could you also comment on the road that goes back into the area where the ball field is now, where there are two houses that the last speaker just spoke about? I guess two speakers ago.
Well, that is what I, Stunstall in and of itself is publicly, it was shown on the 1965 plat, so it was a public right of way.
Sahabi's the other road, yeah, I got it.
Yeah, so Sahabi and Stunstall were part of a 1965 subdivision called Sahabi Court. Sahabi was built, Stunstall was partially built, but it never, it never got completed and it never got turned over to the state. Sahabi is a state maintained road, and I checked that on Monday before I came, it is state maintained, Stunstall Court is not, but again, it is a publicly offered right of way.
Okay. Any other questions?
Is there any scientific support? I've heard the question raised now twice, for potential compromise of the water table if you develop six homes in this area with well and septic system, as far as you know?
As far, I mean, I'm not a well and septic expert, but you have multiple homes that are already out there on wells. Putting six more wells out here should not have an adverse effect on, on the water table. Thank you.
Any other questions? I'd like to declare the public hearing closed and ask if there is a motion.
I'd like to have comments first. I was one to ask, that asks that this matter be continued from the meeting before. I hadn't been there in quite a while, I travel on that cigar road occasionally. And so I was back by there yesterday and went down to the ball field, and Chris, listen carefully. There's, there is, as I saw, two signs, so my memory is, I think it's good enough that I can remember yesterday. The one was at Sahabi, right at the corner and Sunstall, and then took a right there and went on down maybe halfway on Sunstall before you get to the field, and there was another one there on the right. And I've mentioned before, not only about this, if I was one that had to say so, another place that would be a good place to put a sign in situations like that would have been on the corner of Sahabi and Stigall. Could have been some people in, around there that might not known about it if they were depending on just driving by, but I'm sure they had heard about it. But those two signs were there, and just to get anybody that may, the board members that may not have been by there, to give you a description of the whole neighborhood is, there were nice houses up and down Stigall Road and the Sahabi, and I think it's either three or four houses on Sunstall. And if you travel along on Stigall, what you see is, you see nice houses on both sides of the road, and if there is a place big enough for a garden, you might see a garden, and the fields that are there are all, almost all planted in soybeans. I'm not the one that did that, but, and I believe it was one small field of corn and one field of wheat in that stretch of road. And all of that land, it would, if it was not planted in something, it's hard to say what it would be. But I did notice one field that probably had maybe 10 acres in it, and it was between some houses, and it was growing up, and then trees is, don't take long for a field to grow up if you don't plant something on it, probably hadn't been planted in three or four years, maybe. Nothing there. And I'm sure somebody, whoever owned it, somebody had approached them about probably farming it, but that was, that was unusual to see that, because whoever the person was is planting those other fields would, I'm sure, plant that in too, he was right there beside it. So I was just wanting to see as far as what traffic would do if it was six houses, I don't think you could do seven, because it's less square footage than, I believe, than what it would take for seven, but up to six, it gave it a traffic count on it, and I don't recall exactly what it was. The dedication of the right of way, do you know, Chris, whether that might have been
It appears to be 60.
Okay. So, well, this, this, this zoning is proposed zoning. RS 40 is the least dense zoning that is out there in, anywhere in unincorporated areas of the county, so I don't believe that individuals are required to, I know people don't like change, and I don't like change much myself either, probably less than about anybody does, but I and I don't like change much myself either, probably less than about anybody does, because I've seen plenty of it. I don't live too far away from that area there, probably about five miles. Probably some of the people who live over in that area travel on Vance Road so they can, if they're not careful, they'll have to slow down. Be somebody going down a road on a tractor, won't be going fast enough. Might be me. So the, it's just, that's the most dense zoning as far as traffic that we have. If that be three, if that was up there at the corner of Stigall and Sahabi, it wouldn't, it'd be some kind of business there. It wouldn't. And I think probably, Chris, in the, the years back when that was zoned, the B3, that was for the ball field to fit into some kind of zoning. That probably was the only zoning that was available at the time. Is that right?
It was probably the least intense district that allowed it, would be my guess.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Do we, one more question?
Well, no, I just had a comment, but I can wait till, if there's a motion.
Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve zoning map amendment F-1659 in statement of consistency with the comprehensive plan. A move that the zoning map amendment F-1659 be approved on the basis of the following. The proposed general use zoning map amendment, as petitioned by Carnesville Little League Baseball Incorporated to rezone a 6.89 acre piece of property from HBS Highway Business Special Use to RS40 residential single-family minimum 40,000 square foot lots, is consistent with the recommendation of the legacy comprehensive plan and reasonable or in public interest because, number one, the subject property consisting of three baseball fields and an open-air pavilion located at the terminus of Stunstall Road north of Sahibi Road is currently zoned HBS and is adjacent to property zone RS40 and AG, with uses consisting of large lots, single-family homes, and undeveloped land. Number two, the proposed RS40 zoning is primarily intended to accommodate single-family detached dwelling on large lots in areas without access to public water or sewer, typically in growth management areas four and five. Number three, the subject property is located in growth management area five, rural area, and it lacks access to public water or sewer. And number four, the proposed RS40 zoning is consistent with the Northeast Rural Area Study, which recommends large lots, single-family residential use for this site. The proposed use is consistent with the legacy comprehensive plan, which encourages large lots, residential development compatibility with the rural surrounding, and is in a compatible, and it is compatible with proximate zoning and surrounding uses.
Is there a second? I have a second by Commissioner Wilson. Any discussion?
There have been several questions and comments by opponents that I wanted to, I had the answer to at least one of the questions that was raised, was the, was the commission's request to provide a site plan handled as it was intended, and that's a fair question. The answer is yes, it was. I knew when I made that request that there was no site plan attached to the requested rezoning because it's a general rezoning request for RS40. I was asking to see the site plan and conditions attached to the rezoning that was approved back in 1987 so that I could evaluate what is allowed there under current use and way neighborhood concerns expressed about whether you would actually be going to a less restrictive situation that would be less compatible with the neighborhood. And this is what the, what the staff provided at my request. They said they don't usually do that. I said, well, I'm asking for it this time because I need it to evaluate the expressed concerns. And I got it, and it's in our packets. What it says is you've got a site plan there with specific conditions about what's allowed in terms of the facilities, and you have operating conditions that are in there and binding now about what type of lighting can illuminate the field, hours of operation, you know, the speed on Stunstall Road and what else. But there is nothing on the plan that specifically limits it to a softball field. So under the zoning that was approved at that time and its current equivalent, because the, the development code was updated and there are different, you know, category names. But under what's in place now, there could be other recreational uses put on the site that could arguably have less, more impact in terms of noise and, you know, traffic presented to the neighborhood. What the, what the, the real estate agent for the, the petitioners said today that the, you know, the buyer is for a single site, I have no reason to doubt what they're saying, but that's, that's not binding because an RS40 zoning, which is what the land around it, including the neighbors, have now, allows for more lots on the site, you know, on a piece of property the size of that, that's being, that's changing hands and for which the rezoning requested. So we have no way to guarantee, you know, over time, whether that will remain a single lot or whether it would be developed for a, a small number of additional lots. However, I also have no reason to argue that it is unreasonable or fair to the property owner that they should have greater restrictions on the size of their lots than the neighbors around them have now, which is why I think that the motion to approve the rezoning, which is for the RS40 zone, the same as the surrounding neighbors have, is something that I can't argue against.
Only because we were told that we could be selling all that fat which is on the subdivision. Is that true? Does that follow land, then, from the rules and regulations that we have bought and built under?
If, if your property was built under the RS40 zoning, the same rules would apply to them, or what is now the RS40 zoning. But only those. It wouldn't have any special restrictions beyond the RS40 zoning on it.
So it makes no difference what the subdivision rules, the regulations?
Yeah, man.
I'm just trying to clarify, I don't know whether it's, this is a separate entity from the subdivision, or is that then become part of the subdivision that's, that it existed in?
I can't answer that question today.
Yeah. And, and there could be further discussion later. We are, any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And perhaps it could be other, with a Realtor, perhaps some other discussion with the folks that are here. I have no reason to doubt that you're maybe looking at a single owner. That person may change their mind in 30 days, but conceivably, I think that's the plan. All righty. I'd like to make one slight change in our agenda. We actually have in the added items, item 67 is a resolution recognizing June 19th is Juneteenth National Independence Day in Forsyth County. I'd like to go ahead and move that to our normal spot in the agenda for resolutions and call on Commissioner Woodbury to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Martin. And if I may, before I read the resolution, just to have a point of privilege as a citizen and commissioner, I do respectfully continue to appeal to the Forsyth County Commissioners to budget for a paid holiday off for the employees of Forsyth County as a, as done across our country, our state, and locally by the city of Winston-Salem. I request that the commissioners ask our county manager to possibly find funds for a paid holiday off for Juneteenth, 2026, or to at least have an unpaid holiday off. I am now very proud to present this resolution recognizing Juneteenth to the 2024 Queen Juneteenth, Ms. Aleah Copeland. The resolution recognizing June 19th, 2025, as Juneteenth National Independence Day in Forsyth County, North Carolina. Whereas news of the end of slavery did not reach the southeastern states until months after the conclusion of the Civil War, almost two and a half years after President Abraham Lincoln issued the Emancipation Proclamation on January 1st, 1863. Whereas on June 19, 1865, Union soldiers led by Major General Gordon Granger arrived in Galveston, Texas with news that the Civil War had ended and the enslaved were free. Whereas African-Americans who had been slaves in the South celebrated June 19th, commonly known as Juneteenth National Independence Day, as inspiration and encouragement for future generations. Whereas African-Americans from the South have continued the tradition of observing Juneteenth National Independence Day for more than 150 years. Whereas Juneteenth National Independence Day began as a holiday in the state of Texas and is now celebrated in 46 states and the District of Columbia as a special day of observance in recognition of the emancipation of all slaves in the United States. Whereas Juneteenth National Independence Day celebrations have been held to honor African-American freedom while encouraging self-development and respect for all cultures. Whereas the faith and strength of character demonstrated by former slaves and the descendants of former slaves remain an example for all people of the United States, regardless of background, religion, or race. Whereas slavery was not officially abolished until the ratification of the 13th Amendment to the Constitution of the United States on December 6, 1865. And whereas, over the course of its history, the United States has grown into a symbol of democracy and freedom around the world. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners recognizes the historical significance of Juneteenth National Independence Day to the United States and supports the continued nationwide celebration to better understand the experiences that have shaped the United States, adopted this 19th day of June, 2025. Happy Juneteenth. And now I would like to present this resolution to Ms. Aleah Copeland, our 2024 Queen Juneteenth. I would also like to have her parents, Mr. and Ms. Copeland, stand up, and our, and the pageant director for the Queen Juneteenth Scholarship Pageant, Stephanie Hurt, stand up and thank them for their work in our community.
Second the motion. All in favor, please say aye.
I'd like to second.
We have a second from Commissioner Bessie, and we were, and well, now all vote. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All righty. Would you like to say something? Go ahead.
To Chair Martin, Vice Chair Wizenhun, other commissioners, and County Manager Robinson, thank you for allowing me this opportunity to also recognize Juneteenth. Good afternoon. I am Aleah Copeland, your Queen Juneteenth, 2024. I'm a proud graduate of Mount Taber High School, and I'm looking forward to furthering my education at Howard University in the fall. As a queen of this historic Juneteenth celebration, I see it as a powerful reminder of the struggles and triumphs of our ancestors honoring their legacy while inspiring us to continue striving for progress and unity. It has been an honor to represent the Queen Juneteenth Scholarship Pageant Program as it provides young women like myself with the opportunity to grow in confidence, celebrate our culture, and pursue our educational and personal goals with the support of a true sisterhood. Thank you to the Forsyth County Commissioners for recognizing the importance of building esteem in young women as we prepare to exit high school and further our education. Thank you and happy Juneteenth.
Thank you. You're welcome.
I'd just like to note that there are celebrations happening today and this weekend in at least two places in Forsyth County, in Kernersville. It's at 4 o'clock this afternoon. I can't be there personally, obviously, because I'm here. But this weekend, beginning 12:30 at Bailey Park, there will be a big Winston-Salem-based celebration and hope to see a lot of people out there.
And I would just like to also announce that the 2025 Queen Juneteenth Scholarship Pageant will be held tomorrow, actually, at Paisley Middle School at 7:00 PM. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes for the special meeting and regular meeting of June the 5th, 2025. Do you have a motion?
Some move.
motion approved by Vice Chair Wizenhun, seconded by Commissioner Bessie. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, do we have any calls or cards for the public session?
Mr. Chairman, we have three speaker cards.
All righty. Call them up, please.
The first speaker is Priscilla Ivester. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Just tell us your name and address, and you got, have three minutes.
Okay. My name is Priscilla Ivester. I live at 2401 Rosewood Avenue in Winston-Salem, in the Ardmore section of Winston. I have, I appreciate your willingness to give me the opportunity to speak before you, and I will not today waste your time by going over the same thing that you have, have been presented already through my application. Instead, I would prefer to approach a few things that I think are going to be, come up before the Animal Shelter Advisory Board in the near future and just give my thoughts on those. I understand that you have been approached following the resignation of Ms. Briggs by someone suggesting new ordinances. I have read these suggestions, and I feel that they do not represent the kind of ordinances we should adopt. It has always been my view that any new ordinances adopted should meet two criteria. The first is that it would not infringe on the freedom of the citizens. An example of that would be pet limits. Secondly, they should not unfairly subject a subset of our citizens to ordinances that do not apply to all of our citizens. An example of that would be the breeder licensing and regulation that have been suggested. If appointed to a new term on the shelter board, I will make sure that the above two criteria are meant when I consider new ordinances. Our board has been designed to represent stakeholders from varied animal-related interests. We have two positions for welfare organizations. We have positions for hunters, veterinarians, people with animals other than cats and dogs, the health department, and people with no animals, as well as two at-large positions, one of which I am applying for, which are targeted for, to allow any citizen that doesn't qualify under one of the named positions to apply. I bring this up because, if you will note, three out of five applicants for these two at-large positions represent welfare organizations. Putting more animal welfare folks on the board will upset the balance preferred on the board at the ex- the board at the expense of citizens who want to be on the board but do not qualify for any of the named positions. I think it would be much more appropriate for the people who are, who have applied would wait for one of the welfare positions to open up and apply for that at that time. There's nothing wrong with any of the welfare positions applicants. I think they are all good, but I feel like it is just more appropriate for them to apply for the right position. Thank you for your attention and I respectfully request your appointment to the Animal Shelter Advisory Board. Thank you.
The next speaker is Pamela Loughlin. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Pamela Loughlin, PJ to my forefathers. I reside at 1460 Lake Cottage Road in Clements. I am currently on the Animal Services Advisory Board and in the interest of continuity, I have applied for another term. It has been a rewarding and interesting experience. During my time on the board, several of us met with the Commissioners and were integral in the decision to repeal the cumbersome pet licensing tax, which was costing more to administer than it brought in, and returned a bit of freedom to our citizens. No one should have to pay a fee just for the privilege of owning a pet, especially considering how much it costs now to make a trip to the vet. Fees which are actually just taxes only make it harder for lower-income people to pay for pet food and vet services. In my 25 years of breeding show Dobermans, I was a member of the Forsyth Kennel Club and all our members were reputable and exemplary breeders. There was no reason then, and there is no reason now, to force them to pay yet another tax to be able to breed quality purebred pets. And considering how many dogs they sometimes own, a pet licensing tax would be a ridiculous burden. In all my years of being involved with the dog world, I never met a backyard breeder as they are few and far between because of the veterinary expense, the equipment you need, the pet food, plus all other care for not only the adults but the puppies as well. Not to mention those backyard breeders wouldn't pay the tax, putting the burden only on reputable breeders. The Kennel Club also had a volunteer phone line for dog owners to call if they needed advice. I really enjoyed this when I had the phone responsibility and if the county animal shelter wanted to implement something really helpful for pet owners, this would be a good thing to pursue. While a member of the Kennel Club, I attended all the Humane Society meetings for a number of years. I started volunteering for them as a rescue foster owner for any Dobermans that were brought into the animal shelter and managed to rehome quite a few over the years. I have participated a number of times in tribunals as a judge to examine cases of biting dogs and other issues to hopefully come to just and beneficial outcomes for the owners that would also protect the community at large. Nowadays, I only have rescue dogs, one of which, my little Beagle Billow that I would not now own had I not always taken my walk through the animal shelter before meetings. The main goal of the board should of course be the welfare of pets. More outreach programs and maybe some PSAs and fundraisers would go a long way towards informing and educating pet owners.
Ms. Loughlin, could you?
We should ask the public for donations in order to provide spay and neuter services for a very low cost for anyone that needs it. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
The last speaker is Courtney Jones. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Courtney Jones, President and CEO of Big Brothers Big Sisters here in Winston-Salem, 200 South Marshall Street. I came, I'm here before you this morning, or this afternoon, sorry, to just say thank you for the opportunity to be awarded the community grant. It is important for us to be able to continue to come alongside our school partners particularly with everything going on right now. And so I just wanted to come and say thank you. Also, I have been meeting with some of our partner schools and very relieved to be able to tell them that we can continue programming because we are getting support through folks like you believing in the work that we do. I have a couple of statements from some of our school partners that I would like to share with you. Dr. Scales, the Principal of Brunson Elementary, said, "We are so excited to have the opportunity to have Big Brothers Big Sisters at Brunson Elementary again next school year. I have seen the benefits of this program on our students firsthand. Our students are always very excited to see their bigs come through the door. The experiences they have shared are unforgettable. Students commented to me frequently on how glad they were to be able to have a big. Students who did not have a big would ask how they could get one. We are so proud of this program and we hope to continue to provide this service for many years to come." Also, the Principal from Lewisville Elementary, BBBS, has made a difference in our school community by fostering improved self-confidence and peer interactions among participating students. Through mentoring groups, our students have experienced growth which impacts and creates a positive educational experience that prepares them for their future. So just wanted again to say thank you so much. I know that it's a difficult time and there was a lot going on that night. So thank you so much. Appreciate you all supporting us in continuing our mission here in Forsyth County.
Thank you and thank you for the work you do. Good, thanks. Before turning the meeting over to our county manager, actually we have a kind of a special opportunity to recognize some of our employees. A few months ago, we actually received a, a letter from our North Carolina Association of County Commissioners that, that actually described a program from the, this year's President, T. Davis, called Heroic Hands Initiative. And he actually asked every county commission to, to particularly, pick one person to receive a Heroic Hands Award in their community. And since we hosted a regional meeting about two months ago, we actually, so we would, we were invited to introduce our person at that meeting, which we did, we did do that. But in the process of actually selecting that person, actually our county manager, Chantel Robinson, invited all of our managers and department managers to actually recommend an employee. And a group of about, I think, four or five of us actually read them, read the applications, the paragraphs that were submitted. And they were so good, I can tell you that it was, it was very, very hard to pick one person. And we actually commented and said it would really be appropriate to recognize each of these people and it was just a, as a really nice gesture. So we, we have a, a certificate to give them and I'm, in fact, I'm going to ask them up to come up in a second and, and when they're up, when they're up here, I'll actually give them their certificate and Chantel Robinson will actually read, actually read a little bit about them. So the certificate reads of Forsyth County Board of Commissioners, significative acknowledgement and congratulations. Whereas part of the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Heroic Hands Initiative of President Terry Davis, counties across the state highlight dedicated public service workers to emphasize the crucial role, crucial roles in supporting their community. Whereas local government employees provide social, emotional, and cultural services to all citizens that help shape a healthy and vibrant community. Now therefore, this 19th day of June, 2025, the Forsyth County Commissioners extend sincere congratulations to our, we have actually 13 people, for exemplary public service that impact, and the impacts made in Forsyth County, North Carolina. And the folks that we will actually, I'm going to call, if you would, if you will come up and stand across the front, we have our frame, little certificate for you of the front and then County Manager Chantel Robinson will read your names and when we're finished, I'd love to ask if you would come up here and each of the Commissioners could stand and shake your hands and you can just make a little circle up here and that's a lot, lot less movement, but I think everyone would like to shake your hands and say thank you. So with all those instructions, with Daphne Avery, come forward, and Demarius Bullware, and you can just come up one at a time and just come right over. Got Daphne there, we got, Demarius just come up in standing order. Ian Burton is the third. Robert Bualda is the fourth. Rosalyn Covington is the fifth. Doug Krim, six. You're going to have to face the audience though. You gotta, gotta. It's not a firing squad, but you just have to, have to face the audience. There we go. Make sure we're getting, there we go. And make sure I didn't get out of, so Doug Krim, I think I mentioned, Mandy Jackson, Todd Luck, Lieutenant Butch Moore, Michael Schur, Dr. Kathleen Stanton, Justin Stevens, and Annie Vasquez. And I'm going to go down and you can start and we'll begin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good afternoon Commissioners, staff, and guests. I am honored to read a little about each of our honorees. First up is Ms. Daphne Avery. And Daphne was nominated by her Department Director and Deputy CFO. Daphne exemplifies the spirit of public service throughout her amazingly successful career in payroll for over 26 years. She's unwavering in her commitment to producing an accurate and on-time paycheck for over 2,000 county employees. As one colleague stated, "Her quiet consistency behind the scenes of a vital function of county government often goes unnoticed." To Daphne, praise isn't the goal. The goal is to serve the county and its incredible employees providing valuable services to our citizens. Daphne lives over 40 minutes away from the government center, but over her long career, life has thrown her curveballs that prevented her from driving. Instead of taking a vacation day, Daphne scouts the bus and part bus schedules and still makes it to work to ensure we all get paid. Her dedication inspires her team and the Finance Department. Please join me in congratulating Daphne Avery, our Payroll Manager from Finance. Next we have Demaris Bullware, from our airfield maintenance technician from the Smith Reynolds Airport. He was nominated by his Director, Mark Davidson. Mark said, "It's my pleasure to highly recommend Demaris for his outstanding dedication, integrity, and trustworthiness. He consistently, consistently goes above and beyond in his role, demonstrating an exceptional work ethic and a strong commitment to the tenants at the airport. Demaris is always willing to step up when needed, often coming in after hours or on his days off to assist his crew without hesitation. One of Demaris' greatest strengths is his ability to work harmoniously with his coworkers. He maintains a professional and cooperative attitude, ensuring a positive and productive work environment. His non-combative nature allows him to navigate challenges effectively while fostering strong working relationships." Please join me in congratulating Demaris Bullware. Next we, next we have Ian Burton from our Parks and Recreation Department. Ian serves as the Park Maintenance Group Supervisor. He was nominated by Chris Weevil, his Parks and Rec Director. Ian, along with several members of his work group, performed lifesaving measures on a fellow coworker that had a massive heart attack while on duty. Ian came upon this emergency, immediately jumped into action, performing CPR while his coworkers called 911 and went for an AED. As a leader, when confronted with a true life-threatening emergency, Ian acted. After the incident, he took time to support his coworkers that had been witness to the trauma. He also took time to reach out and make personal contact with the family of the coworker that suffered the heart attack. Ian also took time to reach out and visit his coworker who survived the event and he was able to do this because he led from the front, jumped into action, and others followed. Ian performed as a leader. He didn't ask what to do when confronted with an unconscious employee. He acted and immediately began CPR while his other coworkers called 911 and went for an AED. This service made a difference in the fact that the employee who had the massive heart attack survived. Please join me in congratulating Ian Burton. Next up, we have Bob Bualda. Bob was nominated by Brock Smith, the Emergency Services Deputy Chief. We nominate Bob because of his work effort, the enthusiasm he has brought to the office, and the leadership he has demonstrated in developing newer suppression and volunteer members of the fire service during calls. Bob's willingness to learn and take on new projects makes him an invaluable team member. As a fire instructor, Bob has been responsible for teaching new firefighters in the county's volunteer system over the past several years. When responding to calls, he educates new members about the various aspects of the situations they encounter, making them better first responders. Please join me in congratulating Bob Bualda. Next we have Ms. Rosalyn Covington, Deputy Clerk to the County Manager and Commissioner's Office. And she was nominated by Ashley Matthews as well as the County Management Team. Y'all know why. Rosalyn is an integral part of the County Managers and Commissioners Office Team. She's a skilled professional in all administrative duties, goes above and beyond to support citizens and staff, and exemplifies the county's weak here principles. Rosalyn holds a critical position within Forsyth County and is often the first point of contact for citizens who need assistance. On many occasions, Rosalyn provides relevant information to callers and has developed a list of most requested phone numbers and contacts that are outside of county government resources. She's asked to regularly assume many more roles than can be listed in this submission. Rosalyn recognizes what needs to be done prior to being asked and aids other county departments. The fact that she rarely finds herself in difficult situations with coworkers is indicative of how well she works with others. She has a team-oriented approach and treats everyone with dignity and respect. All of Rosalyn's interactions contribute to promoting the image of the Clerk's Office in Forsyth County. Please join me in congratulating Rosalyn Covington. Next we have Doug Krim, Client Services Program Manager at Bridges to Hope Family Justice Center, and he was nominated by Director DeWanna Hamlin. Doug Krim's skills demonstrate a professional history of working with survivors and offenders of interpersonal violence, public health, social and human services, and entrepreneurship. Survivors arrive at the Family Justice Center often after experiencing injury, abuse, or violence that is physical, sexual, emotional, psychological, or financial. Doug is dynamic in his ability to meet people where they are and provide guidance on options, resources, and services available to enhance quality of life, safety, hope, healing, and strength. As Doug Supervisor DeWanna stated, he provides sound leadership, coaching, consistency, and supports and encourages staff ideas. Doug has developed new initiatives that enhance client experiences, excuse me, experiences, including our aftercare program, Bridges Boutique, and community engagement efforts. Please join me in congratulating Doug Krim. Next we have Ms. Mandy Jackson, Senior Social Worker for Adult Protective Services, part of Health and Human Services Division of Social Services. She was nominated by Krista Smith and Rick Hall. Mandy Jackson has provided quality social work and economic services to the residents of Forsyth County for many years. She works diligently to ensure the health, safety, and welfare of each client she serves. She provides detailed information about Adult Protective Services to community agencies and nonprofits to enhance community awareness for Adult Protective Services. Mandy has taken on the role of completing the APS intake rotation schedule and when faced with how to address the intake in relation to the unit being split with telework weeks, Mandy came up with a solution to utilize an online Outlook calendar to schedule intake for those who are in the office for their rotation. This has allowed quality APS intake to be provided. Mandy helped to get an APS client off the streets and into housing. Her work with the client helped him receive medical care and housing, which was life-changing for the client. Please join me in congratulating Mandy Jackson. Next we have Todd Luck, our Communications Specialist from the Communications Department, nominated by his Director Ed McNeil. Todd has been with the counties, has been the county's communicator long before the official formation of the Communications Department. His efforts have kept residents informed throughout the county's social media accounts. As the department grew, Todd continued to expand his responsibilities and impact, proving his immense value time and again. Todd quickly built a reputation for being wherever and whenever county work was happening. He also played a crucial role in keeping the community informed, covering service changes, testing clinics, vaccination sites, and special events during the COVID pandemic. His work has red-. His work has resulted in a vast archive of county history, more than 8,300 photos on the county's Flickr page, most of which Todd shot and edited himself. Most recently, Todd has led efforts to better inform residents through a digital newsletter and writes the majority of the content. Todd is a trusted and invaluable member of the team. Please join me in congratulating Todd Luck.[621.66][621.66](applause). Next up, we have Lieutenant Butch Moore from the Sheriff's Office. He was nominated by Joshua Foster and Sheriff Kimbrough and the entire management team. Lieutenant Butch Moore has worked tirelessly to build trust between the Sheriff's Office and the public, and his efforts have been impactful in creating a safer environment for the citizens of Forsyth County. The initiatives led by Lieutenant Moore focus on education, community events, and sharing important information, always emphasizing collaboration and community involvement. The following are some of the programs Lieutenant Moore has been or is currently involved in, which has made a difference to countless individuals and families. Neighborhood Watch, Crime Prevention Presentations, Civilian Response Act of Shooter Events, Security Assessments for Schools, Churches, Businesses, and Homeowners, Bed-in-the-Book, Toys-for-Tots, Community Coat Closets, Sleeping Bags Distribution to the Homeless, Samaritan Soup Kitchen, Crisis Control Ministries, YMCA, Habitat for Humanity, Special Olympics, Out of the Darkness Suicide Prevention Walk, Vietnam Veterans Memorial Service, DEA National Take Back Day, Christmas in the City, Never Walk Alone, Carolina Classic Fair, Project Teddy Bear, Piedmont Homes Food Pantry, Safe and Sober Prom Night, and Goodwill Industries. Please join me in congratulating Lieutenant Butch Moore.[708.61][708.61](applause). Next, we have Mike Schor, our Facilities Operations Manager from General Services, nominated by Scott Angel, the Director. Mike is a United States Air Force Veteran. After his active duty, he continued to serve for many years in the Air Force Reserve until his retirement on June 4th, 2022. Mike earned a Bachelor of Business Admin degree while fulfilling his Reserve Commitment, which included active, active service during domestic and international deployments, being employed full-time by Forsyth County, and raising a family. Early on in his county career, Mike set himself apart as a leader with significant growth potential. He rose through the ranks, developing professionally and fulfilling his potential along the way. Mike cares, and it shows through the ownership of his role and the interactions with his team and customers. He takes his responsibilities seriously, has high but reasonable expectations of himself and his team, and is very approachable. He invests time and energy into improving himself, his team, operations, and the county's facilities. Please join me in congratulating Mike Schor.[778.19][778.19](applause). Next, we have Dr. Kathleen Stanton, our Dental Director at Public Health. She was nominated by Joshua Swift, Public Health Director. Dr. Stanton started as a dentist at the Public Health Dental Clinic in September 2019 and became the Dentist Director in March 2021. With a heart for people and a deep commitment to improving oral health, she goes above and beyond in serving patients, especially those with the greatest needs, while exhibiting all of the county's We Care Principles. Dr. Stanton's empathy shines in her interactions with patients, ensuring they feel heard, respected, and cared for. She not only provides exceptional clinic care, but also takes the time to educate individuals about their oral health, empowering them with the knowledge to improve their well-being. Beyond the walls of her practice, she's a tireless advocate for community health. She actively volunteers at local community events, always willing to extend her time and expertise, expertise to reach those who might otherwise go without care. Please join me in congratulating Dr. Kathleen Stanton.[845.93][845.93](applause). Next, we have Justin Stevens, Housing Rehab Specialist for Community and Economic Development, nominated by Director Kirby Robinson. Justin manages the department's housing rehab projects, including the Urgent Repair Program, Essential Single Family Rehab, and other similar programs. Justin strives to meet clients where they are and interacts with each participant in a polite and professional manner. Each year, numerous low-to-moderate-income families can stay in their homes because of Justin's hard work. Justin's work directly affects the lives of county residents and leads to community revitalization and reinvestment. He inspires the Community Economic Development Team through his commitment to helping others. He's always accessible and available to clients and often rearranges his schedule to ensure a client's needs are fully addressed in a manner convenient for the client. Justin's positive attitude, can-do spirit, and work ethic, the We Care, he models the We Care Principles, and is a wonderful example for the team. Please join me in congratulating Justin Stevens.[913.63][913.63](applause). Last, and certainly not least, we have Annie Vasquez, Coordinator of Health Services, from Behavioral Health Services, nominated by our interim Behavioral Health Services Director, Rhonda Tatum. Annie, Annie has worked diligently to reduce barriers, increase access, and build a more empathetic and connected support system for individuals with substance use disorders. She has initiated training in the administration of naloxone in English and Spanish for anyone that wants to be able to respond to an opioid overdose. Annie maintains a naloxone vending machine at the Detention Center and works with community partners to host naloxone shelving units, increasing access across the county. She manages opioid settlement activities. The Forsyth Regional Opioid and Substance Use Team was instrumental in providing naloxone to Winston-Salem Forsyth County schools, implemented a stigma index survey, and offered family members that experienced a loss an opportunity to share their stories via videos. Annie cares deeply for our community and serves as a beacon of hope for many. Please join me in congratulating Annie Vasquez.[983.93][983.93](applause).
I think we should stand.
By the way, Annie was our, like, just our county representative. How about, how about standing there, babe?[998.13][998.13](applause).
You can just lead the group there and invite them to.
(laughing).
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sweetheart.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yes.
She did, she did.
I can, I can.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's good. Very good.
Yep.
Okay, you're gonna take a break, aren't you?
This would be a great.
Thank you for coming. Thank you, thank you.
You made 15 minutes.
Yeah, that'd be perfect. I'll, I'll come back, you guys can come back.
Yep.
He's gotta take a 15-minute break. He has to put a patch on.
Congratulations and thank you all. I've actually, it would be helpful, actually, to me, I need, and need to take a real short break, and we'll be back, and when we do, uh, Vice Chair Wizin Hunt will call us to order, uh, 'cause I need a little longer than, than we'll break, so, thank you.
Yep.
Let's work on about 10 minutes back. I'll be back.
Has it been coming any sound clouds?
Let's start back, please, County Manager.
Thank you, Vice Chair Wizenhut, and again, good afternoon, staff and guests. The agenda items before you have been briefed and hopefully questions answered. Agenda item number four is a resolution approving the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council Funding Plan for the fiscal year 26 and authorizing its submission for state approval and implementation. This allocates $940,852 to 13 organizations for efforts to reduce and prevent juvenile crime.
Motion?
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner McDaniel.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bessie. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous. Thank you.
Agenda item number five is an amendment to the fiscal year 25 budget ordinance to appropriate revenue from Juvenile Crime Prevention Council grantees to reimburse unspent funds from fiscal year 24 to the North Carolina Department of Public Safety in the amount of $6,157 from Insight, YWCA, and JCPC Administration.
Motion, please.
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Commissioner McDaniel.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Limble and Commissioner Bess- uh, Bessie? Oh, Wilson, I'm sorry. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous.
Agenda item number six is a resolution approving a second revision to the fiscal year 24-25 Home and Community Care Block Grant County Funding Plan for Older Adults and authorizing execution of necessary documents to submit the revised plan for state approval. This will shift $4,900 from Senior Services Adult Day Health Funds to Adult Day Care.
Motion?
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Commissioner McDaniel.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bessie. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous.
Agenda item number seven is an amendment to the Emergency Telephone System Fund to accept a transfer from the General Fund to account for ineligible expenditures for fiscal year 22 in the amount of $1,395 due to ineligible travel expenditures.
Motion, please.
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Commissioner Limble. Second by Commissioner Bessie. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous.
Agenda item number eight is an amendment to the fiscal year 25 Fire Tax District Special Revenue Fund in the fiscal year 25 budget ordinance. It's projected that actual revenues will exceed estimates in two districts, so amendments are necessary to increase South Fork by $100 and Triangle by $600.
Motion, please. Motion to approve by Commissioner Bessie, second by Commissioner Wilson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous.
Agenda item number nine is a resolution ratifying and authorizing joint applications by Forsyth County and the Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools to receive $3,657,177 from the Education Lottery Fund to retire a portion of the county's school bond indebtedness in an amendment to State Public School Building Capital Fund Grant Project Ordinance, and this will retire debt from the 2006 school bonds.
Motion, please.
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Commissioner McDaniel. Second by Commissioner Bessie. All in favor?
Vice Chair, I, Wizenhut, I do want to just to put on record for there to be a confirmation that these funds cannot be utilized for any support of the school, I mean, of the school debt that's going on. I think there was some conversation wondering if any of these funds could be used to support with the school debt, but I think the law doesn't allow that because these dollars are for strict capital projects.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Agenda item number 10 has several parts. First is an amendment to close the 2016 Schools' Facility CPO and transfer residual balances to the Education CPO Ordinance. B is an amendment to close the 2016 Forsyth Tech Community College Facility CPO and transfer residual balances to the Education CPO. C is an amendment to close the 2018 Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools CPO and transfer residual balances to the Education CPO. D is an amendment to close the 2018 Forsyth Tech Community College Capital Maintenance CPO and transfer residual balances to the Education Capital Projects Ordinance. E is an amendment to close the 2020 Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools Capital Maintenance CPO and transfer residual balances to the Education Capital Projects Ordinance. F is an amendment to close the 2020 Forsyth Tech Community College Capital Maintenance CPO and transfer residual balances to the Education CPO. G is an amendment to close the 2022 Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools Capital Maintenance CPO and transfer residual balances to the Education CPO. H is an amendment to close the 2022 Forsyth Tech Community College Capital CPO and transfer residual balances to the Education CPO. And I is an amendment to the Education Capital Projects Ordinance to receive residual transfers from various capital project ordinances and appropriate project funding. Essentially, this item closes all eight existing CPOs and move all open projects under the newly created Education CPO, which will make it easier to manage. Residual balances not currently funding projects are moved to either a capital reserve account or debt service account in the Education Capital Projects Fund and can only be used to pay debt service, arbitrage rebate payments, or reallocate it to projects.
Got to get a motion for a through aye.
Move second.
And a motion to approve by Commissioner Bessie and a second by Commissioner McDaniel. Are there questions?
No questions. Just a comment. Just to say, thank you, Chantel. I appreciate how we've cleaned that up.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Agenda item number 11 is a resolution authorizing execution of a second amendment to the interlocal agreement with the City of Winston-Salem for administration of the Cure Violence Program. This provides an extension through September 30th, 2025 for anticipated unspent funds up to $65,000.
Could I hear a motion?
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Commissioner McDaniel.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wilson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous.
Agenda item number 12 is a resolution authorizing execution of a second amendment to the agreement with Neighbors for Better Neighborhoods approving a violence interruption program using ARPA funds. This extends Neighbor for Better Neighborhoods contract through September 30th to utilize the city's remaining funds, and then in July, we'll bring you another agenda item for them utilizing the county funds.
Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Commissioner McDaniel.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bessie. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous.
Agenda item number 13 is a resolution authorizing execution of an interlocal agreement with the Town of Rural Hall and Standard Fire and Rescue Services Agreements with Beeson Crossroads, Blues Creek, Clemens, Griffith, Hornytown, Lewisville, Midway, Mineral Springs, Old Richmond, Piney Grove, Salem Chapel, Union Cross, Vianna, and Waukertown Volunteer Fire Departments to serve Forsyth County tax and service districts for a one-year period. This is primarily the same agreements they've had in the past with added language about the overlay district.
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Commissioner Limble. Second by Commissioner Bessie. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous.
Agenda item number 14 is a resolution authorizing an increase to the construction contingency for the Smith Reynolds Airport Terminal renovation project. This is a change order from IL Long Construction Company in an amount not to exceed $164,452 to address unexpected subgrade conditions.
I hear a motion.
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Commissioner McDaniel.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wilson. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Agenda item number 15 is a resolution authorizing execution of an amendment to the agreement with Mark Bedell, B.C., a North Carolina professional corporation trading as the key as legal services for in-room foreclosure legal services, and another resolution authorizing execution of a second amendment to the agreement with Mark Bedell for trading mortgage-style foreclosure legal services. And this will essentially decrease in-room foreclosure legal services by $70,000 and increase mortgage-style legal services by that same amount.
Is there a motion?
I'm moved.
Move approval by Commissioner Woodbury. I hear a second. Second by Commissioner Bessie. Discussion.
I continue to have concerns, you know, about the block billing arrangement here and the absence of any really verifiable documentation as to the actual amount expended, service provided, the task undertaken, which I have expressed before.
Other discussion?
Yeah, if you think there's some serious concern, I can withdraw on that second.
I'm not in a position to assess it, so I wouldn't characterize it as serious concern.
Would it, uh, should we postpone this for further investigation or, you know, I'm just trying to, forgive me, I did not recall that there was concern expressed. I must have missed it.
Yes, I would appreciate the withdrawal of the second in order to postpone the matter for further review.
All right.
Would you want it postponed until the next meeting?
That would be fine, yes.
Okay. So, do we have a motion for that?
Move to postpone.
In a second?
Okay, I'll second that.
Do we have some additional information?
I do see our interim taxes assessor-collector, Mike Pollak, is coming up. I'm not sure if that's going to create issues for this fiscal year or not, so you're welcome to...
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I see that there's some question about this. This is, allows us to pay a vendor for services that have already been rendered, and so, right now, there is not the money in one contract to be able to pay for services that are already rendered. This is money that's been collected from taxpayers that were in the foreclosure program. They've paid their legal fees, and so the county has those fees in hand, and by passing this resolution, we'd be able to take the money that's owed to Mark Bedell and give that money to him. So, I would recommend passing the resolution.
I now understand what you're talking about. There are already committed funds at this point.
Thank you.
So, you're going to withdraw your motion?
I think I will withdraw the motion this time.
I'll withdraw the second. Now, we're back to the original motion, I guess.
We do. And who made the original?
I think I did, originally.
You did. You did.
I'll re-add the second on that one.
Okay. Commissioned by, to approve by Commissioner Woodbury and second by Commissioner Bessie. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll say aye, too, whatever we voted on.
Thank you. And we'll work on trying to clean up that contract when it comes back around, so I can better understand what the challenges are. So, I appreciate the feedback. Agenda item number 16 is a resolution authorizing execution of a contract to provide services for print processing and mailing services for the Forsyth County Tax Administration and Board of Elections. This will award a three-year contract to Master's Touch in an amount not to exceed $1,179,100.
Move to approve.
Hopefully, I'm safe in seconding this one.
Motion by Commissioner Limble, second by Commissioner Bessie. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number 17 is a resolution authorizing execution of an agreement with Wake Forest University Baptist Medical Center for Medical Director Services at the Forsyth County Department of Public Health. This is a three-year contract in an amount not to exceed $582,912.
Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
A second. Motion approved by Commissioner McDaniel, second by Commissioner Bessie. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number 18 is a resolution authorizing execution of an amendment to the agreement with HoLogic Sales and Service. This provides lab services to the Forsyth County Department of Public Health and will extend the contract on a month-to-month basis for no longer than September 30th, 2025 at a cost not to exceed $106,500. The total contract amount not to exceed is $531,500.
Move approval. Motion by Commissioner Bessie. Happy to second that. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number 19 is a resolution authorizing execution of an agreement with Custom Data Processing, Inc. to provide software, record-keeping, and workflow system services to the Department of Public Health Environmental Health Division. This is a three-year contract in an amount not to exceed $152,284.40.
Move approval.
Motion by Vice Chair Wizenhut. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Bessie. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number 20 is a resolution approving an amendment to the agreement with Proprio L.S. LLC for telephonic written and virtual interpretation services. This increases the not-to-exceed amount of the contract from $66,000 to $69,000 due to higher utilization from clients across the Health and Human Services campus.
Motion by Commissioner Bessie.
Second.
Second by Commissioner McDaniel. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number 21 is a resolution authorizing execution of a contract with MCCI LLC to provide laser fiche email automation services for the Department of Social Services. This is a one-year contract not to exceed $58,745.
Move approval. Motion approved by Commissioner Bessie.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wilson. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number 22 is a resolution authorizing execution of an agreement with the Resource Company, Inc. to provide temporary employment services for one-stop early voting and election support at the Forsyth County Board of Elections in an amount not to exceed $742,096 in fiscal year 26 and $1,072,712 in fiscal year 27.
Move approval.
Motion approved by Vice Chair Wizenhut, second by Commissioner Bessie. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number 23 is a resolution authorizing execution of an agreement with Salem One, Inc. to provide poll book printing and packaging services for the Board of Elections. This is a one-year contract in an amount not to exceed $113,402.71.
Is there a motion?
Move approval.
Motion by Vice Chair Wizenhut.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Limble. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number 24 is a resolution authorizing execution of an agreement with Arch Angels Transit, Inc. to provide a micro-transit service to county residents for employment-related transportation. This is a one-year contract in an amount not to exceed $97,231.
Move approval. Motion approved by Commissioner Bessie.
Second.
Second by Commissioner McDaniel. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number 25 is a resolution awarding sub-allocations and contracts for transportation assistance for elderly and disabled residents. This would award a one-year contract to Arch Angels Transit, Forsyth DSS, Shepherd Center of Cornersville, and Winston-Salem Support Systems, and Monarch in a total amount of $195,000.
Move approval.
Motion to approve by Commissioner, Vice Chair Wizenhut.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bessie and Commissioner McDaniel. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number 26 is a resolution authorizing a purchase order for the purchase of one Deamer's MX-170 Ford E450 ambulance unit to Spartan Fire and Emergency Apparatus, Inc. in an amount not to exceed $287,516.
Motion approved by Commissioner Bessie.
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Wizenhut. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number 27 is a resolution awarding and authorizing execution of a contract for card access control updates at the Forsyth County Government Center. This awards a contract to A3 Communications in an amount not to exceed $74,640.39 for the installation of 18 card access control readers.
Move approval.
Motion approved by Vice Chair Wizenhut.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Limble. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number 28 is a resolution awarding and authorizing execution of a contract for elevator and escalator maintenance services for various Forsyth County building locations. This awards a three-year contract to Schindler Elevator Corporation in a total amount not to exceed $396,558.
Move approval.
Motion approved by Vice Chair Wizenhut.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wilson. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number 29 is a resolution awarding and authorizing execution of a contract for janitorial services for various Forsyth County locations. This awards a three-and-a-half year contract to A+ Group, LLC in a total amount not to exceed $1,258,461.92.
Move to approve.
Motion approved by Commissioner Woodbury.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bessie. Any discussion?
I would just like to highlight that it is good to see that A+ is a recognized certified North Carolina hub and MWB firm, and I think that that is such a great thing to see as we continue to award contracts out into our community.
All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number 30 is a resolution awarding and authorizing execution of a contract for solid waste disposal services for various Forsyth County locations. This will consolidate solid waste disposal services across the county in the contract awarded to Waste Industries doing business as GFL Environmental for a three-year contract with a total not to exceed amount of $390,255.95.
Do we have a motion?
Move approval.
Motion approved by Commissioner Bessie. I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number 31 is a resolution awarding and authorizing execution of a contract for an onsite fleet-related inventory management service. This awards a one-year contract to Genuine Parts Company doing business as Napbook Auto Parts in an amount not to exceed $704,550, and we did email some additional information to you all this morning.
Move approval.
Motion by Vice Chair Wizenhut.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bessie. And I would like to thank Chelsea for that information. But it confirms that it is a premium. We were paying about $43,000 more even, and she did, I think, a very nice job on apples-to-apples for this year, FY25 with and without, and made adjustments in price increases. So, we're paying a premium for that, but I've sort of reconciled that what we gained is huge efficiency in processing invoices. That's a big one, and certainly, we seem to be able to get parts a lot quicker than we were before, which allows folks to get things turned around faster. I'd say the only thing for me, I'd like to look at the source... I'd say the only thing, for me, I'd like to look at the source well just a little bit more on the parts. That's a minor issue, but it was a very thorough review, and in fact, the items that occurred before this that Chelsea did, she provided a lot of extra information. I appreciate her getting that, so I can't see her, but I want to thank her. Good. So, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number 32 is a resolution authorizing the fiscal year '26 purchase of pharmaceuticals by the Forsyth County Pharmacy. This allows us to purchase prescriptions and over-the-county medications from Cardinal Health for fiscal year '26 in a total not to exceed amount of $3182,285.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion approved by Commissioner McDaniel, second by Commissioner Bessie. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number 33 is a resolution authorizing the purchase of cellular services and equipment. This authorizes departments to procure cellular services and equipment for fiscal year '26 from AT&amp;T, FirstNet, T-Mobile, U.S. Cellular, and Verizon Wireless per state contract 915A.
Do we have a motion?
Move approval.
Motion to approve by Vice Chair Wizinhat.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wilson. Discussion, I have one question. Since we're using the state contract for this year, it would seem to me that, obviously, we could go on or off it whenever we want to, and I just think we ought to investigate. It doesn't have to take a year, but it could. I believe there are huge savings in the consolidated bid in cellphone services, and we can talk about some more specifications and so forth, but I think we ought to pursue that vigorously, and it does not have to wait a year since we're using the current state price contract issues, because that's why they're good for a year typically, and they're higher on top of that. So, I think some efforts would be very helpful in that. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number 34 is a resolution awarding and authorizing execution of a service contract to Black Card LLC for exterior painting services for the Hangar located at 3820 North Liberty Street at Smith Reynolds Airport in an amount not to exceed $71,448.
Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion approved by Commissioner McDaniel. Be happy to second that. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number 35 is a resolution authorizing execution of a lease agreement with L3 Harris Technologies, Inc. at Smith Reynolds Airport. This is a five-year lease beginning October 1st at an annual fee of $1,800. Lease will automatically renew for four additional five-year terms unless either party wants to terminate.
Is there a motion? Motion by Vice Chair Wizinhat. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner McDaniel. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number 36 is a resolution authorizing execution of an amendment to the lease agreement with Piedmont Propulsion Systems LLC at Smith Reynolds Airport. The county will make improvements to the facility, which requires the tenant to vacate the construction area and store equipment at a county-owned warehouse. After the certificate of occupancy is issued, the annual base rent will increase to $297,3132, subject to CPI and fair market rental value adjustments.
Move approval.
Motion approved by Vice Chair Wizinhat.
Second.
Second by Commissioner McDaniel. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number 37 is a resolution authorizing the county manager to solicit fair market value offers to purchase county-owned real property located at 3325 Silas Creek Parkway. This is Amos Cottage that's leased to Wake Forest University Health Sciences through September 30th, 2025, and they have stated they do not need to renew the lease.
Move approval.
Motion approved by Commissioner Bessie. Happy to second that. Any discussion?
Given the location of that facility, I mean, it's on the Forsyth Hospital campus or adjacent to it, just appears to me problematic to market it.
We've reached out to Novant to see if they may be interested, and no bites yet, but I know Kirby has been working on that, so we just figure we can't wait for them. We're going to see what happens. Kirby, you want to add anything to that?
I can make that through, though. A little more plate.
Maybe if they see a big for sale sign, maybe provide some movement.
They get a big one.
Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number 38 is a resolution declaring certain county-owned personal property surplus and authorizing its disposition by public electronic auction utilizing Liquidity Services Operations LLC. The auction will be held July 14th through July 28th on GovDeals.com, and in the information that Chelsea also provided, she gave you a picture of what those telephones look like.
I'll move approval, and I'm sorry, I'm not going to put in a bid on the rolling telephones.
Motion approved by Commissioner Bessie.
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Wizinhat. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number 39 is a resolution authorizing execution of a lease agreement with Humane Solutions Spay and Neuter Program for lease of county-owned real property located at 5570 Sturmer Park Circle. This is a one-year lease for 1,615 square feet at a base rental amount of $2,960.83 per month for the purpose of providing spay and neuter services.
Motion approved by Commissioner Bessie. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Wizinhat. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
And I will turn over the appointments to Vice Chair Wizinhat.
The following applicants can be appointed by acclamation. Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee, Ronald Graves. That's an open position. Animal Services Advisory Board, Jennifer Asheffy. She's an owner of an animal other than a dog or cat. Community Appearance Commission, Kernersville, Kay Dishar. County resident living within one mile of the town of Kernersville. Town of Kernersville appointment and must be confirmed by the Board of Commissioners. Environmental Assistance and Protection Board, Joseph Manazai. Forsyth County Agriculture Advisory Board, Marty Whitaker. Forsyth County Criminal Justice Prevention Council, Denise Hartsfield at large. Jennifer Asheffy. Sonia Long Williams, substance abuse professional. Foham Martin, representative of local parks. Richard Andrew Keever is a juvenile defense attorney. Jack Manell is at large. Tanya Smith at large. Clint Wilson, school superintendent, are designated. Colladium Board of Directors is Cashu Mia. Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee is Rochelle Joyner, and that's an open position, and these can be appointed by acclamation.
I'll second that. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Oh, I'm sorry, there's another page of this.
We'll make a second motion.
Okay. Piedmont Triad Regional Workforce Development Board, there's Sherri Carpenter, open position. Louis Finney is an open position. Darrell Poole, open. Shannon Stanley is open, and Lee Zhang. The Planning Board in Kernersville is Nathan Mayer. He's a county resident living within one mile of the town of Kernersville. Town of Kernersville appointment and must be confirmed by the Board of Commissioners. Planning Board, City, County, Dixon, Pitt, and Walter Farabee is the City of Winston-Salem appointment, and these must be confirmed by the Board of Commissioners. And that can be done by acclamation.
Second that. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Okay. The following boards have remained vacancies and did not receive applicants. Madam Clerk, please continue the appointments to a future meeting. Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee, Animal Services Advisory Board, Commission on Ending Homelessness, Winston-Salem Forsyth County. Community Appearance Commission, Winston-Salem Forsyth County. Community Child Protection Team, Child Prevention Team. Forsyth County Health and Human Services Board, Industrial Facilities and Pollution Control Financing Authority, Jury Commission, Nursing Home Advisory Committee Forsyth County, and Zoning Board of Adjustment Forsyth County. The following appointments will require a vote. Animal Service Advisory Board, two appointments, two-year terms expiring 2027. The capacity is two at large. Please vote for two. Pam Laughlin, incumbent. Richard Belucky, citizen wishing to serve. Priscilla Ivestor, citizen wishing to serve. Lena Warren, citizen wishing to serve. And Myra Wood. Please vote for two.
Mr. Chairman, Pamela Laughlin and Priscilla Ivestor received majority votes.
Forsyth Tech Community College Board of Trustees, one appointment for a four-year term expiring June 2029. The capacity is a county commissioner appointee. Please vote for one of these. Denise Hines, citizen wishing to serve. Paul Smith, citizen wishing to serve. Paul Wiles, citizen wishing to serve. And Lee Zhang, citizen wishing to serve. Please vote for one.
Mr. Chairman, Paul Wiles received majority vote.
Argutord Commission, one appointment, five-year term expiring June 2030. The capacity is open. Please vote for one. John Davenport, citizen wishing to serve. And Thomas McDaniel, citizen wishing to serve. Please vote for one.
Mr. Chairman, John Davenport received unanimous vote.
All righty.
Agenda item number 60 is a resolution approving refunds by the interim tax collector in the amount of $21,569.97.
Motion approved. All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Linville, second by Commissioner Bessie. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
We can take 61 and 62 together. 61 is the order of the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners in accordance with General Statutes 105-373, and General Statutes 105-321, 105-330.3, 153A-156, and 160A-215.2 for the collection of 2024 and prior year taxes effective July 7th, 2025. And then 62 is the order of the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners in accordance with General Statutes 105-321, 153A-156, and 160A-215.2 for the collection of 2025 taxes effective July 7th, 2025. Essentially, this will authorize Amanda Markle, who starts on July 7th as the tax assessor collector, to collect taxes.
Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion approved by Commissioner Bessie, second by Commissioner Linville. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
We can take 63 and 64 together. They are our reports. 63 is the April human resources report, and 64 is the May financial report.
Have a motion.
Move to approve.
Motion approved by Commissioner Linville. Second by Commissioner Bessie. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number 65 is a resolution authorizing execution of a contract with EPR Systems USA, Inc. to utilize EPR fireworks records and management software. This is a three-year agreement with two one-year options to extend for software that serves 14 of the 16 fire departments.
Move approval.
Motion approved by Vice Chair Wizinhat. I'd happy to second that. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number 66 is a resolution authorizing the purchase and installation of furniture for the Tanglewood Clubhouse Project. This awards a contract to Store Office Environments in an amount not to exceed $170,029.75.
Move approval.
Motion approved by Vice Chair Wizinhat. Second by Commissioner Bessie. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
And agenda item number 68 is adoption of the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program letter to federal delegation. The revised letter was emailed to you earlier today, and there's also a copy at your seats.
Is there a motion to send the letter? Motion by Commissioner McDaniel, second by Commissioner Wilson. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
That is all our agenda items, Mr. Chair.
Well, we did pretty good.
That was good.
Probably why I was out of the room, you guys moved along. I know how that goes.
Oh, yeah.
All right, adjourned.